Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just one addition from staff tonight. It's for other business 11A, the voucher dispersment report. The actual report is now printed in City and resident council here. They also received an email copy earlier today, and it's available for viewing if anybody wants to. Besides that, that is our only addition for tonight.
Thank you. All right, council, any changes you'd like to make to the agenda?
Hearing none, I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. That carries on to the consent agenda. Pursuant to council rules, one motion non-debatable will approve the recommendation noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion and separate action. Such items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered immediately following approval of the balance of the consent agenda. Staff, anything that you'd like to add or edit to tonight's agenda? I've got one thing that I would like to pull from the agenda, if I may, and then open it up for the rest of the council. That is item G, appointment of human rights commissioners. Council, any other items you'd like to pull?
I would like to pull item I.
G and I, okay.
Hearing none, hearing no other changes, rather, I will move that we approve the balance of tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. That motion carries. So what did we approve? We approved city council meeting minutes from May 6th, 2025. We approved a resolution adopting data practices responsibility authority. We approved the deputy registrar's monthly financial statements. We improved Robinsdale Wine and Spirits monthly financial statements. We approved licenses. We approved the second reading of an ordinance amending city code sign ordinance, chapter five, planning and land use, section four, 10 signs. We approved a grant from the USTA tennis court grants. And that is it. So on to item G. So I'm the one that requested this. And what I would like to do is I would like to speak, since I'm appointing members to the HRC. I'd like to have a minute to speak with them before I appoint them. And so I have reached out to both of the members who are the residents who completed the application and have asked for time to meet with them and just get to know them a little bit and understand their motivations. I saw the application, so I obviously have a lot of information. But I just, I feel like, A, like, well, I have two things. One, I want to be involved before the appointment happens. Two, there's an application process that I don't understand, which seems to be different than other commissions. And that application actually has things on it that I'm a little bit concerned with, such as like we're asking for their educational background. And I don't understand if that's a qualifier or a get-to-know-you type of thing, right? Because in the world of work, if it's not relevant to the job, I don't know why we're asking it. Second thing is there's another number of other questions, like share an experience where your willingness to lead and offer an opinion helped your workplace or classroom. Is that relevant? If so, great, let's keep it on the application. Or why have the application at all? But what really bothers me here is when we're asking questions like, what bothers you most? What keeps you up at night? What drives you? What drives you might be relevant, but what bothers you? What keeps you up at night? That could lead a candidate to potentially divulge medical information, information that's not relevant for the HRC. And so I wouldn't ask these questions if I was interviewing somebody for a job. They are in direct violation of the ELC for that matter. So I just think that, one, maybe we just think about getting rid of the application altogether. Two, if I'm the guy appointing people, I want to be involved in the process first. So that's my thoughts. So now what?
Mr. Mayor, council, just a couple of items there. First, it's correct in that under city code, the planning and parks commission does have a bit more of a drawn-out process, maybe a more direct set of steps that need to be taken. Whereas the HRC, again, directed by code, states that the mayor appoints with the advice of council. So a bit of a nuance there. Staff is in full agreement. There's sort of been this longstanding application. Other commissions, we've gone away from that. I can't speak to when the two of you, three, four of you have applied for committees, commissions in the past. We've gone strictly to like a letter of interest, but this has kind of been a longstanding thing. So not to jump the gun, I know there's some interest in kind of not revamping, but addressing some of these concerns going forward. So all this to say, the mayor does ultimately make that appointment. And if at the appetite, what I might recommend, a motion to table the item, which is a non-debatable item. Take a second, go forward with the process as described, and we'd be happy to bring these candidates back at a later date.
I have a question. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Tim. So if the mayor is appointing them with the advice of the council, is there even much utility in having the item on the agenda for city council to even? I mean, it's nice to have a discussion in front of the public, certainly. But is there really any action to be taken by the city council in your mind?
Good question, Mr. Mayor, council, council member Wagner. I think there's been sort of a few items, a bit of transparency. Candidly, I think a bit of celebration, acknowledgement, recognition of those stepping up to volunteer may be appropriate. If he was a group or to decide to do this maybe more in a work session, we could certainly do that. I would suggest, though, based on code, that some type of conversation happen between the group, whether it's a formal action or not.
Great, okay, that's helpful. Yeah, I'm fine with tabling it. I think the mayor makes some good points. It is a very lengthy application, so.
So there's a motion to table it?
I don't know.
He said he was okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not saying there's a motion. I was asking. Any other discussion?
No, I think those are valid points, and I would support tabling it as well. Thank you for bringing it up. Do we make a motion to table the item? So I'll move to table item G, appointment of human rights commissioners. Until, do we like specify?
I would, Mr. Mayor, council, council member Greenberg, I'd ask for a motion to second and a vote.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to table?
So we have a motion to table. Do I need to table it to a specific time or just table it for now? Okay? I made a motion to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. All right, that motion carries. And with my thanks to the residents who stepped up to be on the commission. All right, next item is item I, Sanborn Park Building, RFP.
Yeah, I pulled this just because I want to bring attention to the fact that we are talking about building a new building in Sanborn Park. This is just the first step, and so we're very early in it. But just so that residents are aware that this is something that's going out, that's a request for proposal. So we are going to start getting some responses back once we do that. And that'll have design ideas, and there might be some differences. So I just want residents to be aware that this is an action that's happening and moving forward. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the attached Sanborn Building RFP for distribution.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. That motion carries. Thank you, Jason. Okay, on to presentations. We have none. Next is a public hearing related to solid waste fees. Let me get back to my agenda here, sorry about that. We need a motion to open the public hearing, correct?
Mayor, if you want me to give a little staff introduction to this item first, we can certainly do that. And then you're welcome to open the public hearing after that. So usually, well, in December, in this past December, staff made recommendation to the council to set solid waste fees for 2025, which were adopted and effective starting January 1st, 2025. Throughout that time period, though, we were also in contract negotiations with our new waste hauler, Republic Services, the Twin Cities. And with the old service provider we had, we had unlimited yard waste. And that is no longer the case with the new hauler. They provide a specific cart for that service. Because that wasn't, you know, in the, the fees were set before that contract was actually finalized. Those weren't included in that. So we are asking that those be included as an additional item to those fees that were originally set in December. So that fee would be a $5 extra yard waste fee. And then along with that, just for transparency, we also, when we do a cart exchange fee for like additional garbage or a change of garbage cart, we also charge $10. And although it's like an administration fee, we just wanted to add it to this resolution. So it's, you know, documented and included in there, too. Our city charter says that we must hold a public hearing for these changes to take place. So that's why we're asking the council to hold a public hearing tonight. So open the public hearing, take public testimony, and close the hearing, and then ultimately make a motion to adopt the resolution establishing city waste fees for additional yard waste carts and cart exchange fees. With that, if you have any questions, we're only here to help answer them.
Council, any questions?
A quick question. Chase, if you don't mind sharing, because it's not outlined in the background, but understanding that there is opportunity for residents to also have five bags collected with each bin. If you could outline that a little bit, I think that would be a question for those who are watching, that they might be interested in knowing that info.
Yeah, so I have a follow-up question to you. But certainly, as part of the extra yard waste, or yard waste bin in general allows for five additional of the compostable brown bags that goes along with it. The extra bin would allow for also an additional five bags. So you're paying for the service on top of, doubling the service essentially with that. A follow-up question for you or council would be, if you want me to include that in the resolution and bring it back to council or to change that resolution to include those additional line items.
Thank you for asking. I do think that that would be helpful to have documented in the resolution. Again, I think it would probably be the first question if someone were to review that. Perhaps at first glance, people might be thinking, oh, am I paying $5 per compostable bag to be picked up? And that's certainly not the case here. So to answer your question, yes, it would be nice to have that reflected in the resolution.
Can I ask a question? Or please, I kind of agree with you. So as far as the resolution goes, the change is the $5 per month for an additional bin. But if we can include the language about the additional bags, I don't know that we necessarily, like, so in this resolution, it states it as one way, but we know that it does include the additional five bags. If that's clear in the language to residents, like, we need to go through this process to, okay, this change fee, or like the, that there's an additional fee. It doesn't mention the five bags, which maybe is a good idea. But if in the trying to make this expedient, would it, does it make sense to, that these, this is factually correct? And just making sure that all the language on the website and everything that residents interact, that it also mentions the five bags? I don't know, that, I don't know if that's too subtle of a distinction.
Yeah, I would say the, you know, stuff that we've put out there, the communication does mention five bags. I would say this is purely like a fee resolution. So this is the fees we're charging for that extra cart, not, you know, extra language saying that we won't include those additional bags. But it's just required, a requirement to list what fees we would charge for utilities. So that's why that's included the way it is now.
Maybe it includes the extra five bags, so it maybe does make sense to have that in here. I don't know. I'm trying to like make it quick so we can get the, I don't know, Tim, do you have an opinion on?
Mr. Mayor, council, council member Greenberg, I'm satisfied the way it is. As noted, certainly important to call out in our communications channels. Really, what this resolution does is allows you to charge that $5 fee for the extra bin, which we hadn't captured prior. So if you'd like to beef it up, we certainly can. But this doesn't void any of that. I would say kudos to the resident that references the resolution for their pricing. I think more often it will happen is that they'll go to the pricing pages. They'll go to some of those. So my recommendation is to leave as is. But if council gives direction to beef it up, we'd be happy to do so.
And if I may, maybe I'm splitting hairs, but is a $10 administrative fee, is that, is that just, is it actual cover of time? You mean, obviously, $10 isn't going to like make it or break it for the city. But just wondering, if it's five, seven, maybe it's not that big of a deal. Just thinking out loud, which could be a bad habit.
I will say it was five, and this has jumped up to 10. So that does cover a little more of, you know, the labor and cost of doing the actual exchanges. I think captures some of that fee. So I would say it's a good rate to be at for exchange fee.
So I'm hearing you put some thought into it. You didn't arbitrarily pick a number. Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you. Any other comments?
I do have one question, not about changing this, but just in general to the $10 fee. So if somebody gets a bin, an extra bin, that's, there's the $5 for the bin each month, or, but there's the $10 fee. If they get rid of the bin, is that an additional $10 fee? Or like, is it every change, or is it like?
So the, really, the $5 or the $10 exchange fee is for garbage services or trash services. An extra recycling bin is at no cost to the resident. And then the additional yard waste bin, I guess, would have the $10 fee, too. So.
Okay, but is it, so speaking of, or just in any, it's like yard waste, any exchange fee, is that upon, so I get an extra bin that does have the service fee or the exchange fee associated with it, $10? That if I decide I don't need that extra bin, is that another $10?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. Because I don't know if that is clear as I read this. It sounds like, oh, well, I'll just make the switch, and then it's $10. But it's really if I, every time I make a change, it's an additional $10.
Right.
Keeping it, getting rid of it, bringing it back, so.
If I may, I think just looking at the resolution, it does state per occurrence. And so to me, that seems pretty clear, that anytime any exchange or shift happens, then there will be a $10 charge.
Sorry, another question, and I'm sorry, I don't know this back and forth. But did you say there isn't a fee charged for an additional recycling bin?
Correct.
Why is that?
It's because we want to encourage people to recycle as much as they can. So Republic offers that service directly through them to request it and deliver it at no charge to the residents.
So, okay, I'm going to play devil's advocate. That's naturally begging the question, then why are we charging an administrative fee for an additional yard waste bin?
Mr. Mayor, council, the intent for the fee with the yard waste bin and garbage is, I don't want to say to deter, but one concern we have, we allow for service for unlimited exchanges. People are going to change bins every week. That's to the detriment of the service, to the detriment of staff. The $10, to your earlier question, does it recoup all of the admin time, the driver, the unloading, the loading? Probably not. But really, the, some sort of fee is intended to encourage people to be thoughtful about the bin swaps out. So, you know, as we're coming through the backend of spring. Excuse me, I get emotional over it.
I get emotional.
Yes, we're coming over the backend. I know some people may want to go from a second bin down to one bin. But if you have a heavy wind or a rainstorm throughout the year, again, the intent isn't to swap bins weekly, whether again, yard waste or garbage.
Council, any other thoughts?
Seeing no other, I will move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. Public hearing is open.
Mr. Mayor, seeing no other further comments from the public, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. Public hearing is closed. All right, next. So we're making a motion to adopt a resolution establishing city solid waste fees for additional yard waste carts and cart exchange fees with the additional language that an additional cart brings an additional five more bags, correct?
Correct. I would also advocate the consensus of the council that the intention behind that is really to make sure that the residents receive and have access to that information. So if staff recommendation is to not necessarily include that in the resolution, but rather ensure that that is communicated on the website clearly and other communication avenues, I'm okay with that also.
I've got no issues with that, council? So we are saying communicate clearly on the website, other materials, not for the resolution. We can pass as is, okay?
I'm wondering, it's a related topic. It's not specifically about this, the fee change in this resolution or this, the solid waste fees specifically. But I have recently been getting a lot of feedback about yard waste and just residents and their anticipation of this change of going from unlimited to the bin plus the five bags. And it's really, it seemed like maybe it would be somewhat isolated, but it is really starting to spread out where it's a lot of residents that I'm getting feedback from. And I guess I'm just wondering if the council, I know it's related to this because we're talking about yard waste. Are other council members hearing that feedback as well? Or I guess, is it appropriate to like have this discussion as part of this?
Sure, I say it is.
Yeah. I definitely have heard feedback about the challenges it poses on people. I mean, you know, taking myself out of the equation, which I try to do. I mean, I can empathize with that, right? Because I, up and down my street, we happen to have bigger yards on my street. You know, there's a lot of bags. What I don't have an appreciation for is what the bell curve looks like in Robinsdale. And so, you know, Tim and Chase, an amazing amount of work, right? And I don't want to short that at all. But that's where you see the hesitation and the hemming and hawing in my, in my mind. It's like, you know, am I truly representing the residents' best interests when I know that, you know, we switched to this new hauler because we had issues with service and customer service? And this new hauler, from what I hear, is just that customer service is outstanding, right? But I know with that comes a cost. Probably a lot of that stuff's like inshore versus like, you know, offshore. And so, you know, you gotta, you gotta put the money in your business where you feel like it matters. So if there was a way I could take this away and not have it cost the city more, because at the end of the day, that ends up coming out of the resident's pocket either way, either through taxes or some other means, right? So I don't know. I'm sorry, I just talked in a big circle. I mean, I empathize with you. I just don't know what to do about it, honestly. Council member Wagner.
Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I've heard from a few people about concerns with the change and the kind of the amount of yard waste that can be picked up at a time. My, the majority, though, I think that I've been like CC'd on email-wise is like just missed yard waste bins, which I think is going to be solved eventually. And it's really, from my experiences in the last few weeks with this issue kind of popping up, that Republic has been very responsive with, with folks. And I think that there is a lot of intention behind them, you know, making it right. And it seems like they do end up picking it up in most cases when there is a miss. But for the, yeah, this yard base, yard waste bin change with the amount you can pick up, I will share that I got an email today that just, in part of, part of it is just, I don't, he says that, I don't have to say that adding another yard waste bin for $5 a month is not going to be a good solution to this mounting problem. They were also wondering about, certainly seems to me that there was no engagement and that the city made very poor guess about what residents expect in use with regard to yard waste. So I just wanted to share that comment. That's one example. But I think, just maybe to speak directly to those comments, we were, you know, deliberating for a long time about what this new waste hauler contract would look like. And to the mayor's point about the bell curve, I still am comfortable believing that the vast majority of Robinsdale residents don't produce the amount of yard waste that is concerning to this, to this resident. But I did just want to share that, that I did get that feedback from somebody. But I'm still comfortable supporting this resolution to try to address some of it, give this person in particular some flexibility on what they can do. And we can work with them to come to some kind of understanding about what the new kind of method forward is going to look like. But I think this is like a good, I don't want to, you know, hash out the old like terminology of like compromise, but I think it is a good compromise. Like, there is give and take with, with a new waste hauler, because I think there was a large desire, especially when I ran for office, to get rid of the old one. And so I think I wanted to deliver on promises I made to people to really consider doing that. And I think we did do a good job last year coming up with a new plan and a new system. And yard waste, we're still figuring out, but we're still talking about it. I think that's another thing I want to express to residents that have concerns, is that we aren't done talking about this. But for now, I think this is good. And I'm certain once, and once we hit the fall time, it's going to be, the discussion will be as such. And we can always revisit it then and before then. But anyway, it's a very long-winded statement just to kind of share my thoughts and some very specific feedback I got, so.
Thank you, and that was great. That made me think of one more question. Forgive me if it was already discussed. So if I, or a resident, call the city and say, hey, you know what? I need two more yard waste bins. So two, 10 more bags, still $10 fee per administrative transaction? Or is it $10 fee per bin I'm ordering?
Per bin? Per occurrence.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes, council member.
Also, forgive me if this has been discussed already, but similar to a resident wanting a special item pickup, say like a mattress or a piece of large furniture, the current, the new waste hauler can accommodate that for an additional fee. Is there a similar option for residents? Say, come the fall, I have 15 bags that I want to be picked up. Can I reach out to Republic to say, can I coordinate a special pickup of yard waste for a fee? And if you don't have the answer now, I'd be curious to know if that's an option at a future time. Thanks.
From what I've been told, is the option's not available right now. That doesn't mean that we can't discuss or work out, you know, a potential option through Republic as well. But right now, there's no like means to be able to request additional yard waste bags be collected.
Okay. Personally, I would, I would love to be proactive and try to find a solution ahead of the fall season, because I do believe that this will be a concern that comes up later, given seasonal things, and we can't always predict when all the leaves are going to drop. So I would love to give residents an option besides bringing their own yard waste to the Maple Grove site, which is also for a fee. So that would be an ask that I would make of staff to see what Republic can provide in terms of those ad hoc excessive yard waste pickups. Thank you.
Yeah, so I definitely appreciate the bell curve and trying to... Yeah, so I, I definitely appreciate the bell curve and trying to, you know, have the best solution for the most people. The one thing that I'll throw out and that I've heard from several residents is just around the idea that it's like they don't control how many leaves end up in their yard. Like they have these trees. The leaves fall when they fall regardless of like when the, the pickup ends or begins or anything like that. So that is happening and then the volume of leaves. So regardless of the bell curve, there is gonna be a number of residents that have more leaves than the, you know, than the bin and five bags can accommodate. And so I do, I agree with Mia in that like we do need, I know we're talking about it, which is a great point too. This isn't just like, oh, well, we'll deal with that some other time and too bad. I know it's something that we're working on. But finding a solution is really important, because for the people where this is going to be an issue, it's not like, oh, well, we'll just, you know, there's no other solution. There's not a lot of options for them. So, um, I do think, like, it, again, this is separate from this. I'm, I'm supporting this change fee, the, the solid waste fees. But we do need to continue to work diligently to find a solution that works for people in the city of Robbinsdale that can meet their needs. And I know that, that might be, and I've expressed this to some residents, that there's, that might short-term look different than what the long-term solution is. So we're going to need to be flexible and creative, but, um, that's, I just wanna make sure that that's out there as well.
Mr. Mayor Council, just a couple of brief items, um, not to interrupt. The work session last week, for those that maybe, uh, weren't able to look at their agendas online, watching at home here tonight. Um, this was a discussion topic. Council did charge staff with doing some of what we've discussed here tonight. Um, so just a weekend, we haven't gotten much research to this point. Uh, but, uh, as the clerk noted, um, initial signs with our current hauler don't look good. But that, you know, uh, that, that aside, to the bell curve or whatever, uh, sort of metaphor we're making, the, again, the thought that went into this is that this works for most of the people, most of the time, at an efficient rate. Um, I sometimes compare it to refuse, uh, if you have beyond what your refuse container holds. But we don't allow for an unlimited amount of ref- refuse collection. Um, is the, again, the clerk noted, with recycling, that's a bit different, diverting from the waste stream. Uh, there, there's a more positive to that type of collection, but, uh, with refuse, uh, or yard waste, there's a, a certain processing that goes into that and a cost associated with this as such. Um, we explored the, uh, Maple Grove site as a potential. Uh, the council, I think largely determined last week that it's not something we wanna explore at this time. Uh, in part due to cost, in part due to convenience. Um, but again, staff will continue to explore what those options might look like, uh, for the, the neighbors that you're referencing.
Thank you. Other questions? I got one more, and I'm sorry. So, um, and this is, this is an intentional, uh, question, but how long is the term of our agreement with Republic?
Mr. Mayor Council, it's a five-year.
Five-year term, alright. And I'm assuming there's no term for convenience in there, but a term for cause?
I'm sorry, I.
So there, I mean, if you wanted to say, get out of the agreement, is there like a term for cause or a term for convenience? And I'm sorry for putting you on the spot.
Mr. Mayor Council, the, uh, so there are a variety of outs.
Okay.
It's not, uh, we'd be at a, a number of hypotheticals to even.
Yeah.
Reach the topic.
Not say we run through those now, but I'm just wondering.
The, the, I guess the short answer is sure.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, it's, yeah, it'd be a lo- a longer conversation down the road.
Yes, okay. Well, I, I don't wanna open Pandora's box, uh, on that, cause that's a, that's just a whole different conversation. But, well, uh, so, all of that being said, I, I appreciate the city's willingness to continue to look into options. Um, I appreciate the great ideas that the council has come up with here. And so, um, and I think it even up to maybe what Republic might be able to flex on and help us with, so I know we're gonna look into that. Um, so thank you for that. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Yeah, um, Mayor, I'll move to adopt the resolution establishing the city's solid waste fees for additional yard waste carts and cart exchange fees.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no or nay. Okay, I carry. Thanks for the robust discussion. Uh, next on the agenda is old business, none. And then now we're on to new business, so consider a closed session to discuss the purchase of real property.
Yeah, I think Mr. Mayor Council, staff's making the recommendation that by motion, uh, council go into a closed session. Under state statute thirteen D O five, uh, council may enter into a closed session to discuss the purchase of a real property. The property to be discussed is thirty-four hundred Oakdale Avenue.
Any questions or is there a motion?
I make a motion to move to a closed session to discuss the purchase of real property.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no or nay. Alright, we are now in closed session. Business then, or?
Call it back to order.
Next item on the agenda is the, um.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that you call the meeting back to order.
Oh, yeah, we can certainly do that as well. Is there a motion to call the meeting back to order?
Yes, just call.
Alright, well, we are calling the meeting back to order then, here at eight sixteen P M. On, uh, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Okay. Next item on the agenda is, where'd it go? There it is. Uh, city manual, city manager annual performance review.
Yeah, I think Mr. Mayor Council, so again, under Minnesota state statute, chapter thirteen, a public body may close the meeting to evaluate the performance of an individual who is subject to its authority. Uh, public shall identify the individual, which you have already done. Um, and either tonight after, uh, this item or at the next open meeting, uh, the public body shall summarize its conclusions, uh, regarding the evaluation. So city, uh, staff's recommendation is by motion, turn to a closed session to discuss the city manager's annual performance review.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to a closed session to discuss the city manager's annual performance review.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no or nay. Alright, we are now in a closed session. At forty-one P M. Is there a motion that needs to be made here?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we, uh, let's see, execute the contract adjustment agreement with the city manager, moving him to step five.
Second. Thank you.
Okay, we have a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no or nay. Eyes have it. Congratulations, Tim. Alright, um, and again, we're, we're glad you're here. So, uh, moving on, I'm sorry, that was very unceremonious.
We had a long discussion beforehand, yeah.
Okay, alright, um, do a great job, Tim. It's late. Alright, so, uh, let's see, moving on to other business, uh, voucher requests pending approval for dispersment. Any questions there? Do we have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve dispersment request for the period ending five twenty, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no or nay. That carries. Administrative reports.
Uh, nothing for me tonight, thank you.
You said none?
None.
Great, I'm sorry, I was spoiling this here. Alright, uh, general, council, council general communications. I'm sorry, Tim, hey, you're still here, yes.
Mr. Mayor Council, I am still here, thank you. Just, uh, wanna encourage folks to, especially as we're getting into that busy spring, summer season, uh, tune into some of our, uh, updated communications. You know, we've got the weekly news that goes out, uh, different, uh, programs, recreational events, otherwise, a lot of that's being broadcast. Uh, certainly look forward to things like the, uh, cleanup down at Hollingsworth on Thursday. But really, we're just getting into that season, so I won't ramble all them off, but wanna encourage folks to stay tuned to our communications and be excited to see out this, uh, spring and summer.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, council general communications. Any?
Start with me.
I'm looking at you now.
Sure, great.
Council member.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, I just, and I guess to the Mayor's, uh, point about maybe that being, uh, just congratulating Tim and all that stuff, it, it probably is worth just kind of going on, explain to the public what we were doing for the last, uh, seventy-five minutes. So we were, um, talking with Tim about the, um, uh, you know, his ti- his time here, his work here, and we were just expressing our gratitude for that. And I think, um, I just wanted to express that too, to the public. So thank you, Tim, for your time here. I think there's been a lot of things that, uh, have been done under your leadership. Uh, some things I wanna highlight are the, um, sustainability efforts that we've, um, championed, as well as the forestry program and the nationally renowned and recognized public works projects that we've undertaken. Um, and a whole lot more. So thanks for being here, Tim, and thank you to the council for a, a good discussion on, uh, all those matters. I also wanna, uh, wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day weekend coming up. Hope you're doing something fun. And with that, I will pass it on to the next council member.
Uh, council member Parisian.
Thank you. Uh, very well said, coun- council member Wagner. I, uh, also extend my thanks to the city manager for all of your hard work over the last year. It is, uh, a pleasure to, um, recount all of the successes and wins over the, the past year and all, all of the opportunities for growth, not only, um, in the position, but also as an organization as a whole. And that also goes for the rest of council, so really appreciate, uh, each and every one of you, uh, during these meetings and productive discussions. And with that, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Excellent. Council member Greenberg?
Yep, also echo the other council members. Uh, thanks to Tim and the city manager and the work that he does. I also want to, uh, make note that there's a community cleanup event on Thursday night that starts at six thirty at Hollingsworth Park. Um, I actually also heard some great feedback from a resident about, uh, our Parks and Rec staff went to Lakeview Elementary this week and did, um, some recess activities with students, which was very well received. And, um, thanks a lot to our Parks and Rec department for doing that. And then, um, yeah, just everybody have a happy and safe Memorial Day.
Thanks, Jason. Council member Blackledge?
Yes, um, also wanna continue to echo the sentiment, it's Tim, um, thank you for being a leader in our community and continuing to keep us driving in the right direction. Um, just really quickly, just wanted to remind everybody about the, uh, community survey that's out, so please fill that out. It helps us to, um, be informed, to make decisions, and, uh, make sure we're doing what we need to do as a, as a council as well. And as always, greet your neighbors, say hi, be a friendly face. Thank you.
Wonderful. And, uh, forgive me, Tim, I unceremoniously just blew right past, uh, the, uh, the increase to step five. But yes, uh, you know, we all had a good discussion, and I think, you know, for those that are listening, uh, who don't understand all that goes into being a city manager, it's late nights, it's early mornings, it's, it's work that you don't see. And, um, I think, uh, you know, all, all of us on the council would agree, but, you know, I can't imagine what life is like without a competent city manager. And so, um, we're lucky and thankful to have you here. And, um, so thank you, Tim, uh, for the work that you do and, and hope, uh, that that good work continues, actually it will. Uh, last thing I'll say is, yes, have a happy Memorial Day, but I also wanna give, uh, council member Greenberg a pat on the back. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, was it already a couple of weeks, maybe it was three weeks ago, when we had that unfortunate event, the shooting in the city. Um, and, uh, we all know the end result of that was tragic. Uh, you know, Jason, I just, I can't say how much it means, like, to residents, but also just like how proud I am. And boy, I'm proud. It's not like I'm your father, but at the same time, I just, I thought it was so cool. You went out, knocked on doors in the neighborhood around Sandborne and had conversations with residents. And so, you know, for those that are listening again who don't know, I mean, that's, that just shows compassion here at the city council level. That's awesome, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Um, with that, uh, is there a move to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. Meeting adjourned.